Meeting for order. My name is Dionne Bussie Reader. I'm the Chairwoman of the Board of Commissioners for the D.C. Housing Authority. I call this meeting to order. And for those of you guys who do not know me, I'm looking forward to the day that we can actually be in person again and get to know each other a little bit better so that we can actually move this agency forward in a very progressive manner. So this is our regularly monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, November 10th, 2021. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing. The time is now 1:16 PM. If you are not speaking, please ensure that you place your devices on mute. I appreciate you for doing so. I would like to just take a moment for silent, a moment of silence. Thank you. Today's agenda is our regularly, our regular agenda. We have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website. For those who would like to just, would like to add a computer meeting, could do so via live on the DCHA website linked to our Facebook. The verse of the Quorum, "The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituents' input on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views, including our spirited debate of DCHA's decisions by its management and the board." During the public testimony portion every meeting, however, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of the Quorum to allow the board to complete the business before it. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak and that you do not use the chat to comment when it's not your time to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in disruptive conduct or loud, threatening, or abusive language during our board meetings. This includes loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed immediately from our virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in you being barred from speaking at future board meetings for a period of at least 60 days. We appreciate your interest in the matters before us today and thank you in advance for adding and abiding by our rules of conduct. I believe you've already shared with me, Alethea, that I do have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do need to do a roll call.
Thank you, ma'am. Please proceed.
Thanks. Commissioner Strickland? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Commissioner.
Here, present.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio? I see him waving.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz-Gow? Commissioner Ortiz-Gow? I'm not hearing a response, but I see that he's on the line. Commissioner Hoffman?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Slouver?
Present.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, Bussie Reader?
Present.
Thank you. You have six commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like the commissioners to consider the minutes of the October 13, 21 board meeting. I'm sure all of you had an opportunity to read there. Are there any comments or changes?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Talia Farrow is listed as absent. I think that's an inaccurate reflection.
Okay. Noted. It will be changed.
Can we change that to the, because he's suspended?
Yes, yes, sir. Alethea, will you make note that we're changing that to suspended?
Yes, I have it. Thank you.
And the other question I had, I'm not sure if this is the right place or not, but based on the resolution we're about to consider, I wonder if resolutions 2118 and 2119 need to be revoted on, given the resolution we're about to consider? Do we have a legal opinion as to whether those resolutions stand based on, on the votes?
There is, we reviewed, there was no impact of the vote and Commissioner Van Goswely was not present at that meeting.
So?
So they do not need to be reaffirmed?
By virtue of the fact that there, someone voted who was not a commissioner, that's not a problem?
It did not change the vote.
So that's, that's, that's the criteria? So that's the legal? The legal, we have a legal opinion on that or is it the general counsel's opinion?
She just gave us the, she said it's not, it had no impact of her statement.
I'm asking a different question. I just want to make sure that it's, we have a legal opinion that those votes don't have to be retaken.
So you'll see in the resolution that if the board takes up the resolution next week, it also reaffirms that resolution vote as a part of the extension of the bylaws, amendment of the bylaws.
This is the quarter where, could the speaker identify themselves? I can't tell who's speaking if they're in the conference room, sorry.
Sure. I am Andrea Powell. I am the interim general counsel.
So the resolution would be retroactive, it sounds like?
It would reaffirm the vote, the resolution.
So if the resolution doesn't pass, then they would still stand, the resolutions?
Yes, and we'll confirm that back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or changes to the minutes? Very none. I will entertain a motion to accept the minute with the changes recommended by Commissioner Slouver.
As amended, I so move. Commissioner Hoffman?
Second. Commissioner Strickland?
Thank you. Alethea, do we need to do a roll call here?
You can do it all in favor.
All in favor of the minute from the October 13 meeting moving forward? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The minutes have been accepted. Thank you. So this time we do have our Executive Director's report, where we would like to begin and share. Executive Director Donald, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a brief deck to, to show and walk through. I think the main theme of my report for this month is that on behalf of the 800 hardworking DCHA employees that we are focused and doing the work of the housing authority on behalf of our residents. I've organized the report in a format that I plan to use for subsequent reports if this works for the board. And one is to talk about critical actions and conversations, updates on our moving to work strategy, initiatives or agenda items that I have briefed the board on before. And then touch on employee events, stakeholder engagement and customer engagement and other partnerships. On critical conversations, actions and conversations, we've had several constructive meetings with our HUD partners to review status of our budget, operations and maintenance. And also, we have submitted a corrective action plan that regarding the assessments, the annual assessments or periodic assessments that HUD does on property conditions, they have asked for, they asked us and we submitted a corrective action plan to bring those assessment scores up to acceptable ranges. This is all part of our whole capital projects and you all were, the board was briefed on this last month. In addition, I do provide, or members of my team, periodic briefings to policymakers. That would include D.C. City Council Housing Committee Chair Anita Fonz and her staff. We gave an in-depth review of the FY 2122 capital spending plan, our wait list reduction strategies and the voucher administration. I also hold bi-weekly meetings with City Council Human Services Chair Brianna Doe for updates on housing choice vouchers, State DC and other topics. And I should have had a bullet on here. I'm an active member of DMPED's Housing Agency Partners Meeting that we meet once a month and sometimes in between. So a couple of items that I wanted to bring to the board's attention you've asked for updates on. One is the emergency housing vouchers. Just as a reminder, we received a little over $11 million from the federal government for emergency housing vouchers. Of course, these are administered in partnership with Department of Human Services and the continuum of care and that's their criteria for who's eligible for these vouchers. We have very detailed process and MOU, one that was confirmed or approved by HUD. And one that we believe is working. We have so far, and just to kind of skip to the main points, we've issued 164 vouchers. And then to put that in context, we, the $11.7 million translates into approximately 525 vouchers. Reminding everybody that it depends on the size of the unit and the value of the rent. But that's kind of the goal based on the dollar amount. We have 18 months to issue these vouchers. Clearly, we want to issue them as quickly as possible so that more people are housed. So we are moving down that road. We have 30 leased up and I believe we actually have more than that in this last week. So the process started a little slow, but vouchers have been issued and people are searching for housing so that they can get leased up. I have really good news on the next item, which is State DC. And to remind everybody, that is the city's program to administer federally funded eviction prevention dollars that were issued under, during the pandemic as part of the Federal Cares Act or one of the pandemic relief acts. What you see here is a little bit of a complicated slide, but it shows in just in all transparency that we do have a large amount of outstanding rent that goes back many years. And I've indicated to the board and have said publicly that we will be implementing strategies to make sure that we are collecting our rent and that we don't get so far behind. But our focus over these last few months was on State DC. There's a limited time period for that program and a limited amount of money, a considerable amount of money that the city processed all for tenants all across the city. Housing authorities portion of that, we estimated that we had about 2,200 residents who owed a little over $5 million in rent during the period, the pandemic period. And we started late, we started in July, although the program started in April. But we had a very focused process and kudos to our team on, our teams on property management, finance, our office and others who really pushed to make this happen. And where we are now is 4.5 million of the $5 million has been attributed to our residents, our D.C. Housing Authority residents. So almost all of the $5 million so far has been collected. We do have applications in, I believe, for the balance. And some of those will be processed because they were in before the deadline when the program closed. Others, we're still verifying the data on those. I think this is a huge success in a very short period of time. And these funds, we have not, had not booked them in our budget. They will go, I believe, to our reserve account. So this is good news as well. The next slide just shows some, some pictures where our staff did pop-up clinics at various housing authority sites and that really increased our ability to help residents with the applications. Quickly, also kudos to our Office of Capital Programs that was charged with obligating $50 million in capital funds from the city as part of our overall portfolio investments. And when I got here in June, only about $10 million had been obligated. That was a, there were lots of reasons for it, but we put in processes and focused intensively on making sure that we had the dollars moving for, moving and approved through the various approval processes and contracts awarded. So you see here, 96% or over $48 million was actually obligated by the end of the fiscal year. And many of the projects are just starting in terms of architect and engineering plans for work that will continue this year, some stabilization projects, lead abatement, capital replacement and vacant make-ready units. I wanted to just shift to a couple of quick employee events. Our employees are very active in a number of activities and initiatives in addition to their regular jobs. We think this is important for employee morale and to allow our employees to contribute beyond their day job. So I've initiated a new quarterly day of service program. We kicked it off on October 1, where about 300 employees were, and myself included, refreshed senior properties with either paint or landscaping and other kind of sprucing up activities that the properties needed. And these were in partnership with our resident councils and our property management team as well as employees from all throughout the agency. It was a really exciting and positive day. We also have launched our Season of Giving. We normally have a 5K run. This year it was virtual with pictures and posts that were shared on our social media. And I'll talk a little bit about specific activities in another couple of slides. We have, I've also initiated regular all-staff meetings. And our first one was, well, actually the second one since I've been here, October 6. And we had over 400 employees who participated in that. It was virtual, but lots of positive feedback about having regular all-staffs instead of once or twice a year as had been done previously. We'll be doing those on a bimonthly basis and on alternate months we'll have an employee newsletters. Our newsletter will be going out this week, I think, or next week. Some upcoming employee events, we have tomorrow a virtual veterans event with speakers and some training and motivational speakers that will be posted on our various, on our website and social media. Tomorrow, we will be providing Thanksgiving meals to our senior properties on the week of November 22. These will be hot meals and again will be an opportunity for our employees to participate in another day of service. So we'll be signing up. And all of these activities are open to any board members who wish to participate. Can you let me know or Alethea? And we have been sending out notices of the dates and how you can sign up. Our annual gift of love toy distribution, it will be between December 13th and 17th at specific pop-up sites. And also, we will be distributing toys to some of our smaller sites who have raised their hand to say that they typically miss out on the large events because they are smaller and our team is making sure that they are included as well. We'll have an employee recognition program on December 9th, which wants to be part of our all-staff. And then our Season of Given, giving will end in January with a coat giveaway. Stakeholder engage, a lot of stakeholder engagement activities. It's really, really important that we are meeting with stakeholders, that we are sharing information, that we're rebuilding partnerships that may have been fractured and that I am, as a new executive director and within, being introduced in, in building relationships or reaffirming relationships that I, in this new role. I have convened a monthly resident council president's leadership team. That has been requested or mentioned by some of our, our constituents who have spoken at various board meetings about committing to a regular monthly meeting. I believe Deborah Fraser was one who asked me to make that commitment. I did. And this is just one of the ways that I am meeting with residents. This meeting, we had over, we had about 35 resident council presidents and they were very positive. It's a, it's a, it's a meeting where they are advising me and where I'm sharing information to them. So we'll keep you informed if there's specific recommendations that come out of that. Greenleaf Gardens, we've been involved in a four-month engagement process to culminate with our plans to come to the board in December to approve that plan. I want to thank our Chair and Commissioner Slouver and Hoffman for coming out on October 30th to the Harvest Day, which was the in-person meeting. The other meetings have been virtual. And so it was a way residents wanted to have some interaction with the agency and our development partners. And that happened on that day. I also did a walkthrough with Resident Council President Rhonda Hamilton and Christine Spencer for Syfex Gardens in James Creek to identify some issues of concern that they had and just to rebuild those relationships. And we've already delivered on a couple of very specific things that they asked for. I did a walkthrough with Commissioner Council on October 22nd, also at Fort Dupont along with members of the Capitol team to go over some drainage concerns and other issues that Commissioner has pointed out. That was a follow-up from our last board meeting. And then finally, I participated in Potomac Gardens with members of my team, Senior Residence Council meeting on October 28. The next slide just has some pictures of some of the activities. We launched yesterday again and requested or committed to at a previous board meeting with Melvo that we would, Melvo, which is a rad projects for five different developments, that we would now be going specifically to each of the developments and meeting with their residents and talking about plans for their redevelopment and any relocation or other needs that we would have in order to, would have to accommodate our residents. We kicked that off last night with Elvin's Road and The Villager. And we have the other three next week that were very, very positive, very constructive meetings where residents shared their wishes and concerns. And we made commitments about how to follow up in the process, particularly around relocation. Then we have a meeting next week with Park Morton to discuss this fall's construction. And the next slide just shows some other customer engagement activities that our Office of Resident Services and Property Management Operations initiates themselves as part of their regular activities. I wanted to highlight also our partnerships with sister agencies. This is really important. We are, while we're independent, we're not an island and we serve many of the same residents. So Department of Employment Services, we have an MOU with them to fund a property management apprenticeship program that starts this month, I believe. And we met with them to offer an information session to people who were interested in that. That's primarily for residents and for voucher holders. Department of Energy and the Environment has a number of exciting opportunities for us in terms of solar energy and some other grants that I would love to come back to the board with Director Wells to talk about. But this particular activity was a grant funded through Casey Trees. We were planted 250 trees at various properties in Wards 5, 7 and 8 and to battle what is now known as shade equity. There have been analyses that have been done in urban environments in DC, of course, being one, about the lack of trees and how that affects environmental conditions in some of our neighborhoods. So this is a really positive partnership and we're very excited about that. Then DC opened doors in a housing finance agency, hosted a credit building class and for our family self-sufficiency program and our rent reporting requirements. And we have about, had about 70 residents who were part of those programs that hopefully will lead them towards homeownership. And then finally, continuing with partnerships, we, our developer at Providence Place offered free lunch from Pinky's Eats at Lincoln Heights and just something they did on their own. And we are also re-engaging with the advocacy community. I have monthly meetings with advocates and we've been doing that for about three months now. But also, this month's activities culminated with a really awesome event on Saturday at Benning Terrace that was organized by Wynn and was attended by about 100 residents, some who came from some of our other properties to really talk about their hopes and desires and some of their frustrations with the housing authority over the years and hopes that we'll be moving forward in a more productive way. Learned a lot and I'm very excited to be part of that event. So that is my update to our commissioners and to the general public. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, Commissioner or the Executive Director regarding her report?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Uh, yeah, I had a few that relate to the slides, which I'm trying to get back up. Sorry. Okay, on the emergency housing vouchers. No, I'm sorry, on State DC. I believe you said that we had 2,200 residents on whose behalf we got some $5 million. But the numbers on this slide are very different and I can't figure out what they mean.
Yes, to clarify, yeah, sorry. I said that we had 2,264 tenants who were eligible for State DC for back rent of a little over $5 million. The collection so far is $4.567 million. And you're right, the numbers that that indicates 1,249 residents. So we are still reconciling the data. Either the other residents owe very small amounts of money and in some, we, we focused on back rent of $100 or more. So there could conceivably be some people who only owed a few hundred dollars, even though that has not been the real trend. So we're still reconciling that to make sure that we are capturing everyone who was eligible at that time. And we will have an update now that the State DC program has stopped accepting new applications and reconciling with DHS and the Deloitte partners.
Okay. What confused me was the numbers at the top, the number of households, 2,570 and with 100. I mean, those, where did those numbers come from?
Yes. So the 2,570 is the total number of households who owe back rent going, again, going back many years. That is 13.785 million dollars. And of them, of that number, 2,427 owed $100 or more. And that's what we decided to focus on. Then we scrubbed the list and 173, I mean, sorry, 163 were uncollectible for various reasons. People either had moved or they were deceased or there are other reasons. And so then the target- And so then the target number is the twenty-two-sixty-four.
Okay, and what are you doing about the payments that were made directly to tenants that I gather should have been made to DCHA?
Correct, so two reasons for that. One, and then I'll tell you what our solution is. One is that I told you, we started the program late, and so some residents had already applied to State D.C. before we entered in our landlord applications. And so they went directly to the tenants. They were actually, and they're, the tenants are legally obligated to pay that money over to DCHA, and they have been notified, and actually some have. And what I can do is give a follow-up update to show what that number was in the beginning, how many then have already either transferred or paid DCHA, and how many are still outstanding. And that's, again, some data reconciliation that we're still doing.
My understanding was that the landlord always had to file something for a tenant to get money, is that not correct?
Okay, we have the expert here.
I can jump in, no, it's the opposite. So the resident can apply directly, and then the housing provider doesn't have to participate. But the, when the housing provider is the one to initiate the application, it cannot move forward without the resident filling out their portion of the application. So in some instances, the five-hundred-fifty-one instances, that would have been applications that the resident filled out, and that the housing provider, in this case, DCHA, didn't respond in time, so the payment was made directly to the resident.
This is the quarter reporter. Can the previous speaker please identify themselves?
That was John Falchekio.
Great, thank you.
And you said that you figured out how to collect rent so we don't get this huge bank block. How are you doing?
No, I have not, no. That is, what I said was that that is on the priority list for us to do some, first of all, we have to do some analysis to figure out how we have such large outstanding balances, how far they go back, how many people are involved, whether or not they include fines and fees, or what are the reasons for that? So we will be doing that over the next couple of months, but our focus immediately was on State D.C. because that had a limited time window and federal funds that clearly we wanted to take advantage of. So this is, that's the next phase of focus on rent collection.
Okay, and we still don't collect all of the rent we are owed, correct?
That is correct.
On a current basis?
Correct.
So what, are you doing anything about that?
Right, so that, again, that, the strategies for that will be determined by the analysis, right? We need to know who's not paying, why they're not paying. Again, how far back is this accurate? Do we have people on the list who have moved or who are deceased? So that will take a little bit of work, and we do, we will be moving forward on that, as I said, in the next couple of months.
Okay, and the next thing, question I had was on the Resident Council Presidents. You say leadership team. Is that a subset of the Resident Council Presidents?
No, that is everyone. That are, all the Resident Council Presidents are invited to be part of that council.
Okay, I think that's all of my questions.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I got a quick follow-up to Commissioner Hoffman's. If you go back to the previous slide about the collection. So eligible for State D.C. is five million, and we've collected four-point-five, so there's only five-hundred-thousand dollars left to collect. That's pretty good.
Yeah, we're proud of that. Thank you.
So good, good work on that. And I just want to add some historical information to the outstanding balance issue. That has been a long-discussed issue on this board. I think we've discussed this already in the last couple of months, and that's really something that the board needs to get their arms around in terms of how hard we want to collect that rent. Because as, when this issue came up in the past, the board's position was, we would, we would prefer not to evict, and therefore, we were not going to be as stringent about collecting the rent, and that, this is the result you're seeing. And so that was, that was a, I'll call it a purposeful decision of the board at the time. Any board can make a different decision, but that, that is why you're seeing that.
Right, and I appreciate that, Commissioner, and we'll certainly come back to you with recommendations. And I think you raised that before, rent collection does not have to be an eviction strategy, and we collect at a higher rate for our properties that are the mixed asset properties we collect in the ninety percent rate. Some of it has to do with outreach and engagement and expectation and updating certification of changes in, in income, and we're also looking at other jurisdictions that are similar to ours, and we're frankly at the lowest level of rent collection, even with other cities who are very tenant-friendly. And we know that we're in the housing business. Our goal is not to put people on the street, but it is to be clear about what, about rent collection and expectations, and to make sure that we have processes that work and that we're not waiting months and months down the road to engage people and get them to pay, to pay their rent. There are some places that even have some incentives, so there's, there are a lot of things I think we can look at, but certainly, we are very low in terms of our rent collection rates, and we, we need to do better.
I don't, I don't disagree, I was just giving that history. And you did reference the mixed finance properties. We don't collect, that rent's collected by the landlord, who we are not, correct?
That, that is correct. There are a couple of them that we, we manage, I think maybe just be one or two, that we are managing ourselves. But I think that's also something for us to take a look at, as performance relative to us against others.
Well, the motivation for the mixed finances, they gotta pay, they have to pay a mortgage to the lender, and so, I mean, that's, that's, that's why you're seeing higher collection. Anyway, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Falchekio.
I'm gonna emulate Commissioner Slover, as I often try to do, and on slide eight, just kudos to the team for the obligation of the capital funds, so definitely appreciate that. And so that is for FY twenty-one.
Yes.
Which ended on September thirtieth. Could you remind me to the allocation for FY twenty-two, and then how will that be planned as well?
Yes, we do, we have also gratefully another fifty-million-dollar allocation from the city for FY twenty-two, and we are, we briefed the board at the last round back on the spending plans for that. We are now enrolled in the city's, the Office of Chief Financial Officers CARs system that helps to, that and expedite processing of the, the request for distribution of money. That was a big issue last year, that took a while. We have regular meetings with OCFO, so, and in a very productive way to make sure that, nothing is sitting on someone's desk. So we're moving forward, and we do have plans for obligating all of that money and then moving these projects forward as well. I mean, that's something that we should give the board at least quarterly updates on, on each of the projects and plans.
Okay, so the next one, so we got it last month in October, we'd probably come back to it in January.
Yes.
To see where we are.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a couple of questions. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, so what I want to echo Commissioner Slover and Commissioner Falchekio, I thought that the event, you all going out to the different sites, I thought that was a great, great experience. I enjoyed meeting many of the residents myself, so thank you for that, great job. The other question I do have, very directly, are we catching those individuals who actually received the check themselves from D.C. State? Are we able to do that?
Yes, we know who they, we know who they are, and they are obligated to pay, and the State D.C. DHS team who's overseeing this as well has a role in ensuring that people pay, and there are penalties that could be taken because it would be considered theft if they kept the money that they received on behalf of back rent that was legitimately owed. But hopefully, that number is getting, that number is getting smaller and smaller. People have been making their payments, and we are following up, but yes, we know exactly who they are.
Okay, good. And they are clear prior to applying for those files, the consequences if they do not use them appropriately?
Yes, they have to sign that, either an application or some part of the, yes, that they are notified of that.
Okay, I'm clear, I'm clear. If there are no more questions regarding the Executive Director's report, hearing none? Okay, so we actually have, we're gonna move forward, I'm sorry, you guys, a lot going on over here where I am, my apologies. So we're gonna move forward on the agenda. We actually now are gonna entertain the resolution. We want public comments on the Resolution twenty-one-twenty-one to adopt that amendment to bylaws regarding Residence Commissioners term.
Madam Chair, you have one person that has signed up to speak on the, the resolution, that's Mr. Jordan.
I'm sorry, you said, who was that, Alixie?
Mr. William Jordan that signed up to speak on the resolution.
Mr. Jordan, are you prepared?
Yes, I am.
Hello, sir, how are you?
How are you doing? I'll be short. I just had a couple suggestions based on my experience. One is, you know, I know this resolution is not necessarily designed to address this, but, you know, properties going through privatization really need a voice, and that, you know, even though we are going through this process, I think the board needs to take an extra step, I don't know if it's non-voting position or do something, because your ability to elect is your ability to have influence, and even if it's extended or changed for whatever reason, you're changing that dynamic. So I just really wanted to just make that statement, that I don't know what the process needs to be, but I do think properties going through privatization, whether it's new communities or certain kind of rads or whatever, their interests and needs are completely different, and that voice is needed. So I will stop there.
So move that, I want to believe, Executive Director, please correct me if I'm wrong, we will have a new housing choice voucher board member to join us soon, is that correct?
Yes, there is someone who's been nominated and is moving through that process.
Okay, I believe Mr. Jordan, that would accommodate some of your concerns as well.
No, I think it's different. I think the dynamic is very different. I mean, I think it's really not even, doesn't even overlap, because you, during the privatization process, you really have no representation. So for instance, in working with Park Morton, there's a status where the, where the Resident Council doesn't really represent all of the residents, and then when the project is done, it's still unclear of how representation works. And so if you're in a redeveloped property, you're in a unit, but that unit is not a voucher unit, how are you represented? And then how are you represented during, for instance, at Park Morton, this twelve-year process? And actually, half the residents, because this was a two-phase process, aren't represented anymore, or maybe, we really don't know. So I do think it's different. Maybe it's only during this stage or process that you have that kind of representation, but I think it's clear that the interests and needs are completely different than normal. So, so I would say no. That's an improvement, but I would say no, it doesn't address the issue.
Understood, I think we're gonna take that into advisement and have a discussion with our Executive Director, well, how do we impact and have representation from the population you mentioned? Thank you so much, Mr. Jordan. So we'll, we'll actually talk to, that's really a D.C. City Council issue that we need to have them resolve, but we'll move forward with the discussion and actually report back to you directly. Okay, so that was the only public comment on the resolution at the moment. Next, we need our board to consider the resolution.
Very nice. So just for the, for the, for the public in, in the, in the board meeting, Ms. Powell will kind of tee that up.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Andrea Powell, interim General Counsel here at DCHA. Wanted to give a little bit of background on the resolution, what it's intended to do. The resolution, as has been posted, would amend the bylaws of the D.C. Housing Authority and its Board of Commissioners. There are three Resident Commissioners that are, that are on the Board of Commissioners, and HUD requires that every housing authority that has a board has representation from someone who is assisted. In the case of DCHA, there are three Resident Commissioners, one from senior disabled, one from family, and one at large. The resolution that is before the board to be considered today and adopted at a second meeting would extend the term of the current Resident Commissioners that expired on October first and the election postponed due to COVID. Again, HUD requires that housing authorities who have a board include resident representation. What is being proposed is that the term of the Resident Commissioners be extended until the Resident Commissioner elections occur, which is currently planned to occur not later than March of twenty-two. And so that is what is being considered at this meeting today, but will not be voted on today, but we are here to answer any questions of the board and to address this Resident Commissioner term.
Thank you, thank you, Andrea. So now we were actually here from the public. I'm sorry, I apologize, there was a question from Commissioner Slover.
I think we've already heard from the, from the public on this, so now we're doing. Commissioners, correct? So I'd have a few questions and comments about the resolution, if that's okay. I mean, I just want to start off by saying, I certainly, as a member of the board, want this to get resolved as quickly as possible, but I wanted to make sure we're doing it right so that we don't have to do it again. So I have a few questions related to that. One is sort of setting the stage of when, when did the agency fundamentally become aware that this was an issue?
I was made aware of this about two weeks ago, maybe three, and discussed it with our General Counsel, just to make sure that I understood and to see what all the options were, and she confirmed that these, you know, this is defined by statute, and that the only options were the options that we're putting forth. I will say this also for the rec- I will say this also for the record, that I spoke with the two resident commissioners who are, were at the time active or, let me say, Commissioners Council and Van Goghary to have one-on-one conversations with them as soon as I found out the implications and the process that we would be, that we were, that we are recommending to go forward.
So you, when was the agency, when did anybody in the agency know that this was an issue?
Well, I, yes, I can't speak to that. So I think, well, let me understand, the way it was explained to me was that, that the practice in the past has been that the elections for resident council officers occur on alternate years from the elections for resident commissioners. And that because of COVID, a decision was made to move the resident council elections forward one year, which was this year. So normally, resident council elections would have been in 2020 and the resident commissioners would have been in 2021. The, but then the resident council elections were moved to 2021. Um, so at the, then the interpretation, and this would have had to been the previous administration, was that the resident council elections would also move forward. Another, would be pushed another year so that they would continue the pattern of alternate year elections. I do not know how that was vetted, who researched it, what the, but the, that's what they concluded. So there were no plans made to have the elections happen in time for the resident council commissioners to, for the, you know, so that their terms would not expire. When this was brought to my attention, said we obviously have to fix this and now we are unfortunately backing into it.
So you had no knowledge about it until two or three weeks ago. So the question, of course, to the, to the agency would be, why, why wouldn't you have had the election September 9th and 10th, 2021, coinciding with the resident council president election, knowing that this was an issue?
Right. And again, I think the previous administration and perhaps it was the team of property management who oversees those elections, I can't say, but they believed that the elections would need to occur on the alternate year and that would mean that the resident council elections would move forward a year and that they couldn't occur in the same year. Again, I don't know what the basis for that interpretation, but that's how they planned.
So from your time of taking over until then, it was never discussed that this was an issue?
No, it, no, it was not discussed that it was an issue.
Good. So the next question would be, what authority does the board have to extend its own members? In other words, do we have an illegal opinion from somebody that says, because it seems out of the ordinary for, for, for a board to be able to, through a bylaw change, extend their own terms? Or extend, sort of push out the election, alter their terms by virtue of a bylaw change? Because it's, it wouldn't, it's a temporary thing. And so I'm just wondering where the authority comes from to do this?
Okay, Ms. Powell?
So, you know, as we proposed it, it is the board would adopt the bylaw amendment to make sure that we have someone in place and be consistent with our HUD requirements so that we don't have a lapse during that period of time, which hopefully be as short as, as possible. And this is a one-time situation because of the COVID, because of the resident council elections were delayed, it delayed these resident commissioner elections.
No, I, I understand the purpose and the goal, but we did have an election during September 9th and 10th. And so to suggest that it's because of COVID that we didn't have the election, I think is, is not right. What I'm asking for is, what is the, what authority does the board have? Again, I get the goal and I get the, the desire to get the commissioners back on as soon as possible. I'm just asking what authority we have to take that action? Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't the setting up of a board, this board come from some other empowering? Like, isn't it a city council? Isn't it our statute? Like, we can't alter that. So does a bylaw amendment? What I'm, the core of what I'm getting to is, does a bylaw amendment, is that actually going to be able to extend it? Can we extend our own terms?
Yes, that's what we proposed, but we, we're proposing that the bylaws be amended to do that, yes.
And do we have a legal opinion from some firm or from you or from somebody that says, here's why we can do it, like, here's the, here's where the authority lies that allows us to do this? Because what I really don't want to do is, in, in, in the midst of everything that's going on, is try, and, and again, as I stated in the beginning, I really want this to get resolved. I just don't want to do something that's not.
So, let, let me reiterate, Commissioner Slover, this isn't a vote that we're taking today. So I just want us to be all clear, that this is not a vote. We are, we are actually bringing forth the resolution. What I'm, I want to ask Andrea to do is, Andrea, so we seek outside legal counsel to ensure that we have the authority to, Commissioner Slover's point, to make this resolution. Is that possible? Isn't that what you're asking, Commissioner Slover?
Well, I'm wondering, I thought we were voting on it.
No, we're not, that's, we're not voting on it today. It's not a vote today. No, it's not a vote today.
Do we have the, do you have the legal opinion and the authority to do?
Back on that, as you requested, Commissioner Slover.
So at this point, we don't have that.
This is the advice of our General Counsel that the amending the bylaws will cure the expiration of the term. So you're asking for an additional look at this legally or?
I just, I just, I just find it, I just find it interesting that you could do that. By virtue of that, we could all extend our own terms as long as we want.
That's, that's actually, Chair.
I believe the bylaws allow.
Chair.
Yes, please, please, Commissioner, for your.
It's, yeah, Commissioner, I'll take it. So the, but we want to be able to extend our, our terms in conflict with district law. So the council sets the term for some members. So it, the, the bylaw change is something for the resident commissioners, which that's what governs the resident commissioners, right? So like, Commissioner Strickland, and not to pick on him, he can't change the bylaws to change his terms because that's actually set. But I think this is what the legal guidance or the legal opinion could outline for us. But we shouldn't walk away, though, we shouldn't walk away thinking we could all change our own terms.
It's not what this is.
This, this term is also set very clear. The election had to have been, had to have taken place two months prior to October 1st. So therefore, expired. And so we're basically trying to go retroactive. I'm just, I just don't want to pass, I just don't want to entertain a resolution based on something that we can actually do. And that's all, I'm asking for that.
Right.
For that.
And that's, and that's clear. I think we're, I think that's noted and that's why we're not voting today. One of the things that we need to be mindful of is that the conversation that we're having was as a result of what we knew happened, what we knew happened within the organization. And as a result of that, we missed the term limit. So we want to ensure that we're able to give the resident council members, commissioners, an opportunity, a fair opportunity to be reelected. That's what we're saying. So this is not a vote that we're making, from, I got you, Commissioner Strickland. This is not a vote we're making. We're discussing a possible resolution, which is a remedy to the situation that we're dealing with. So I just want us all to be clear. Commissioner Strickland, please.
Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, I think Commissioner Hoffman had hers up first.
I apologize, I missed you. Commissioner Hoffman, please proceed.
Yeah, my question is, for the resident council elections, we had to get permission from HUD to run them at the wrong time. Have we asked HUD if it's okay for us to run the resident commissioners' elections now? We haven't been told that we did get the okay from HUD.
They don't govern, thank you, Commissioner, they don't govern how we do the elections. Some housing authorities don't elect their resident commissioners, some are appointed. But we will take the comments that we receive here into consideration.
And it, my, my question was similar to that of Commissioner Hoffman. Can we, whatever opinion we get from HUD or from other legal body, can we have that before we set a meeting date of this emergency meeting? Because it would not make sense if we don't have that before we set a meeting date.
Um, can I, Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, I was going to, please proceed, I apologize.
I was going to ask if I could make a, a proposal to Commissioner Strickland's comment that we could still have a tentative date set if it meets the, looking for that date early next week. And then if we have not cleared the hurdle with the definitive information that the board has requested, then we would push that out. But I'd rather at least have a date on the calendar.
And I'm going to ask Andrea, if you could, are you clear that the HUD does not govern any part of the board? So I just want to make sure to, Commissioner Hoffman's point. That's something we have to keep counsel from HUD on?
Response back to, yes.
Yes, we don't, or yes?
We will confirm that, we will confirm.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to be clear. Okay. And I think, does that satisfy your question? Andrea said they will confirm, Strickland, okay, I give thumbs up. Any other commissioners' comments regarding the resolution? Hearing none, we're going to move towards the public comment on the agenda. I see we do have a question in the chat, Andrea, could you, Alethea, could you help me out? How does the public know per the resolutions posted on the board's website, which ones will be voted on or not during the board of commissioners' meeting? I'm going to yield to the executive team, Andrea, Director Donald, did you all hear the question?
Apologize, Madam Chair, let's clarify.
No problem, no problem. One of the questions was, how does the public know per the resolutions posted on the board's website, which ones will be voted on or not during the board of commissioners' meeting?
So I can jump in for you, Madam Chair. So on the agenda, on the agenda that's posted for today's meeting, there are two numbers listed under the title, and number two says board discussion. Usually that says board action if there's a vote to be taken. So that is your indication as to what will happen with, with the resolution. So on this particular agenda where it's associated to, for this particular resolution, we do have a board discussions versus board action. So that'll be your indication as to what would take place at the board meeting.
Thank you, Alethea, I appreciate that. Okay, so I do have a, a list that Alethea looks like has gotten misplaced in all of the papers that I have in front of me. So would you be so kind, oh, here it is, I have it. We'll begin with the public comment. I do, do we have Stephanie Law? Stephanie Law here. Stephanie Law. All right, Rosa Burbidge?
I am here and good evening, good afternoon to everyone. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Rosa Burbidge, the current president of Lincoln Road Apartments. Self-sufficiency, dignity, and respect is the cornerstone of the foundational principles of DCHA. Thank you, Executive Donald, for bringing that back and up to the forefront. First, let me say we're all here because of the residents. I love all of your beautiful faces and smiles, but the residents must take first priority. With that said, in order to move forward effectively and efficiently, the residents' voice must be heard. I noticed that on occasions you can go back into the bylaws and change things. One of the things that I'm hoping that can be done is to have more than this mere five minutes that residents gets to speak because conversation go back and forth in and out. Another thing I applaud that was said was about the State DC monies, that the residents, the reason they did receive those checks is because of the timeline, because they were concerned and they were moving faster than DCHA. So they didn't try to do anything underhanded. And we know money is the root of all evil and we seen the changes that it has taken effect even there in our esteemed board. So again, I say, you are here for the residents. Ms. Donald, Executive Donald, again, I applaud you when we talk about the collecting the rent. Some things we may have to just charge it to the game, as they say, because you are DC Housing, here to provide homes for people. For whatever reason that may have happened, maybe along with all of the things we're trying to initiate, we can initiate a program to teach residents how to be a little more fugal, how to make their rent their priority, how to help them so this situation would not come up again. In closing, I'm going to say again, each and every member there, you're not there because you look good, because you sure do. You're here to help the residents. So let's cut up ship up or shape out? Or should I say shape up or ship out? If you're not here with the best interest of the residents at the forefront, please reevaluate and rethink your purpose. I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate your comments, thank you. Detrice Bell, are you over here? Detrice Bell? Detrice Bell? Paulette Matthews? Paulette Matthews? We'll come back to, try to come back to Paulette and Detrice. President Ha, Shanta Ha.
Hello, thank you. One second, let me pull up my testimony. Thank you. Proverbs 327, "Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due when it is in your power to do it." Good day to all in attendance, I'm Nishant Ha, President of the Council at Park Morton. First, I'd like to do, courtesy of Ben and former Chairman Neil Albert, a heartfelt farewell and best wishes in the future. He conducted the meetings very admirably. Congratulations to Commissioner Deion Bussie-Reader for her newfound position hosting the Chair of the DCHA Board of Commissioners. For months, I have, yes?
I'm sorry, I, I, I must have pushed the wrong button on my landline phone. My name is Stephanie Johnson Law. Can you hear me?
Um, we can hear you, I'm giving testimony.
Yes, we can hear you, ma'am, but we're proceeding with Ms. Ha with her testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought it was my turn to speak.
No problem. Please proceed, Ms. Ha.
My, my apologies, everybody. For months I have been asking for information dealing with the Park Morton redevelopment. The District, the District of Columbia House Authority has failed to deliver this information to me, although it is said it will be transparent. Well, I'm seeing through it right now. How is this agency ever supposed to correct the behavior of communication transparency? if it cannot do something as simple as giving me information about the redevelopment or willingly withholding information from me? I have requested information about where the Resident Council Office and Community Room would be located on the property, and the District of Columbia Housing Authority failed to give me this information under the Garrett administration as well as the current administration in a timely manner. DCHA has known, has been known, has known, I'm sorry, excuse me, all along where the Resident Council Office and Community Room would be located from the beginning, however, has failed to communicate this information to me as DCHA knew that there would be apprehension in the placement of these offices. Also, I would like to bring up the fact that I mentioned to Madam Director Donald that if by chance the Community Room and Resident Council Office were to be located in the same building as the Property Management Office, this would be a problem. Having the Resident Council Office in the same building as the Property Management does not allow residents to have the privacy that we have now. It would also trick my anxiety having to interact with Ms. Diallo every day, knowing that she has wronged me and DCHA has allowed her to get away with it, and she has kept her job, as well as a long list of other wrongdoings that I won't get into now. And as resident and president, privacy is my number one main concern. If residents don't feel comfortable talking to me in my office, then that means they will knock at my door, which disturbs my home. No thought or care was given to this process when this was done. What was the problems with accommodating my family? Now, we have addressed, I'm gonna cut that right there and leave that with Madam Director, and I'm gonna send y'all my testimony, but I wanna jump right here towards the end and ask, what sense does it make for my 21-year-old daughter to share a room with her six-year-old sibling? She is an adult. She needs her own space. But in the, but this is the role of DCHA though, isn't it? Not to accommodate yet aggravate the masses by doing petty tasks to assimilate their ideas, their plans, their programs, just to demonstrate the superiority over the people they govern, to continue to oppress until they're what they call the hood, what the hood calls a hot mess just to prove a point that when their mind is traumatized, that it can't concentrate. Although the people have spoken and voted me in twice as their leader, there will never be another one like me, so please, do not try to imitate. You want to sell our community yet deny us the right to equity while our lives are already in jeopardy. Give us a slice of the pie, because many of the residents who are old have already died. And I leave you with Philippines 4, 8, and 9. Finally, brothers, whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is commendable. If there is any excellence, if there is any worthy of, anything worthy of praise, think about these things. What you have learned and received and heard and seen in me, practice these things, and the God of peace will be with you. I am Miss Shante Ha, President of the Council at Park Morton.
Thank you, President Ha, I just wanted to just, I don't know if you had enough opportunity, but I was actually working with the Executive Director, and they sent you some responses on last night. I'm not certain if you received those, okay.
Yes, ma'am, I've been looking those over, and a couple of things I do need to address.
Okay, so we can find it out, 'cause I do believe that we've been trying to ensure that we communicate. I know you've sent me some of the emails as well, and I've been very adamant about the team responding to you. So after this, if you would like to have an additional conversation, but I didn't wanna put on record that they, that the staff did respond to some of your questions. May not like the answers, but we did respond to some of your concerns and the ones that you felt were not addressed appropriately, we can have a follow-up conversation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
No problem, no problem. Okay, thank you again, President Ha. We're gonna move forward to Paulette Lowry. I see you on the screen, but I don't know if you've muted.
Remind the callers if you hit star six, if you're on a phone, it might help unmute you, I'm not sure if it's a muting issue.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Johnson Law, can you hear me?
Ms. Law, Ms. Law, you're not up yet, Ms. Law. We haven't called you yet. No problem. No problem, we're on, Paulette Lowry. If you're muted on your phone, you have to press pound star, is that correct, Alithia?
Star six.
Star six.
Yes, yes, this is Ms. Lowry.
Okay. Please proceed with your testimony, ma'am.
So, I just wanna tell you that I'm enjoying this council meeting. There's been some very interesting things said. So, I wanna address a couple of things with Ms. Donald. Ms. Donald, last time I was on the call, which was two months ago, I waited for. I didn't get on last month, and I decided to get back on this month. And I can't remember the man who voted you in when the council people asked, why did you get in so quickly? And he said because he knew about the work you had done. I don't remember his name, but I remember when I spoke and I said what I said. He told you personally to look into it. I have not heard from you, anything. So, I'm calling you to address that situation at 2420 Ontario Road. I'm in Apartment 103 with the mold, the moisture, with my family, that I've been in hotels with the floods, and all I've asked is to be relocated. I put in an emergency move in July, nothing has happened. Every time you just keep putting a Band-Aid on the situation, and I'm still suffering from the moisture in the air, the dry, you know, just the constant things, I don't wanna keep going on. So, I'm gonna ask you one more time, will you come see me, like he asked you personally to come and address me? On another note, is that a yes or a no, Ms. Donald?
Executive Director?
Excuse me?
You must be muted. Hold on one second, Ms. Lowry.
Okay.
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No, not you, Ms. Lowry, I'm speaking to the Executive Director. She's gonna mute you. Give us one second.
Yes, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, yes, Ms. Lowry, I will give you a call right after this meeting.
All right. So on another note, I'm listening at, on the last call, we talked about the $35 million that we spent, that we got for the fiscal year of 2021. I hear that there were emergency vouchers that went out, and we got $11 million for that, and you, out of 520, you've only given out 164. So, is that for the fiscal year of '21 that you're talking about, Ms. Donald?
That emergency housing voucher program just started in August of this year, so it's not for the whole fiscal year. And those are vouchers for people who fall in certain categories, who are homeless. And so, those who are already in public housing would not be eligible.
I understand that, but at the time that I was in a hotel, I was in an emergency situation, and I asked for one, so I still think it applied. But anyway, do we get to see where the, who got the vouchers? And because there's so many left over, will you, when it's the fiscal year, to give them out? Because as I heard, you also asked for $60 million this year. And do we get to see where the $35 million went? Does the resident, can the residents, where is it that we can go to see where the $35 million went? Step by step, where the vouchers, the emergency vouchers went, and then the vouchers that you can give out just because, because on, there are two sets of different vouchers that you can give out, that are according to section eight. Trying to see what else I have written down here. Is there somewhere we can go look and find that?
I will follow up with you, Ms. Lowry, you're asking two different things, so I just wanna make sure that I'm explaining things clearly and, but again, I will follow up with you, and actually, I did follow up, just for the record, to your initial request, I think is one where you didn't like our answer, but I will, we'll call you after this meeting.
All right. And then Melvo?
You have one minute, Ms. Lowry, you have one minute.
And then Melvo, the contracts are coming back again, where they came last year, they're coming back again. Is there somewhere that we can go look at, when Melvo looks like we're last on the list? Is there, and I'm going through these issues, is there somewhere that I, or someone I can talk to about where we are in terms of Melvo and the contractors coming in, but they set up a meeting and this did show up?
We have a meeting next week, Ms. Lowry, on Ontario Road, to discuss Melvo and where Ontario Road is in the project, in the timeline and everything. That meeting is next week.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Law, we're gonna come back to you now before we proceed, Ms. Stephanie Law. Ms. Law, if you're on a phone, you need to hit star six.
Hello?
We can, yeah, we can, we can hear you now, you can proceed.
Okay. Good afternoon and happy holidays to everyone. My name is Stephanie Johnson Law. Disabled, confined to a bed in a wheelchair. I've been living in this unit for six years. I've had my voucher for 21 years. Unfortunately, I have been relocated. I had to move from a foreclosed home. Right now, I'm living in an apartment that's undeflorable conditions. I've had mice problems for the past four years, crawling up on my bed, all over my curtains. I even have had my tub in my bathroom is in poor condition. I have to take a shower with rubber shoes on, heat ton. I had problems with the back bedroom, the carpet was mold and mildewed. I went out and purchased carpet myself. It took the landlord over 10 months to lay the carpet that I got for the back bedroom. He takes months, years before he addresses problems in this unit that I live in. And I've gotten to a point that it has gotten me, gave me depression and anxiety. I'm still waiting on things now to be addressed. Unfortunately, he doesn't do anything. Like I said, it takes months, years before he come out to address things. I have had a legal aid lawyer to address certain problems in the unit, and I'm just at my wit's end about the situation here, you know? And I've even gotten a ramp built on the back of this building myself because of my handicapness and stuff, you know, so. And of course, you know, it's just, I'm in a four-unit building, and it's called for that he doesn't address cleaning the hallway, hasn't been cleaned in six years, you know, it smells, it reeks with odor, and then not let alone, he gives us, instead of sending out an exterminator to exterminate the unit, he gives us cans of roach spray to be our own exterminator. And enough is enough. I have written to HUD in the past five years, I've written a letter once a year to HUD, 451 Seventh Street Southwest, Housing and Urban Development, and I remain anonymous, fearing that I may be evicted. But I have written a letter each year to complain about the poor conditions, you know? And unfortunately, I'm gonna just say this, whether I be cut off or not, I'm living in a slumlord unit. Not a landlord, a slumlord, period. And I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Law, could you repeat the address again? Did we get that, Director Donald, the address for Ms. Law's issue?
You want my address?
Yes, ma'am, we wanna be able to address this.
I live at 2955 Nelson in the LSO N Place, Apartment 1, Washington DC, of course, zip code 20019. And like I said, I'm disabled, I've been disabled for 38 years, and I'm confined to a bed in a wheelchair. And I cannot sit up here and do the things that the landlord should be doing. I'm doing it myself. Instead of him doing it, I'm doing it. And like I said, my tub has been, and if someone has a cell phone, I can send you the pictures of, the tub has been in poor condition for five whole years.
We got you, thank you, Ms. Law, we're on it. Director Donald, you on your team, you were able to capture that, thank you. Ms. Law, this is gonna be addressed immediately. Thank you for coming on and sharing this information, and we apologize that you have to live in these conditions. We're gonna move on to the next guest public testimony, Peggy Ditrow? Peggy Ditrow?
If she's not ready, Paulette Matthews is ready.
Yes, I was, I was, I was gonna go to you, Ms. Matthews, I was about to say that next, we're gonna come back to you. Ms. Paulette Matthews, please go right ahead. Can y'all hear? We can hear you, ma'am. We lost you, we could hear you, we can't hear you now. If you're speaking, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can, you can proceed.
Okay, I got on here with some issues of mine, but, and listening to everybody else, we never have enough time. But the gift of love will be for y'all to correct the problem that the lady just spoke about. That's just, that's just a sad situation, especially during these holiday times. And for her to have to have lived through it throughout all those years, throughout the holidays and just day-by-day living. So, I hope y'all will address that as soon as possible. I have some issues, like I said, myself, and it's been going on for some time now. And I heard, first of all, let me start with Ms. Donaldson. And I believe that lady was talking about Chair Albert at the time, who has resigned. Because Ms. Donaldson, we had a conversation when we were talking about the letter when we had this meeting, where it was just basically some residents from Berry Farms, and you were told of letters that were printed out saying that they could come back and they signed their names to it, but yet they didn't have a copy. In that conversation, you said, okay, well, y'all gonna check through it, dah 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 dah. That didn't transpire, so you was like, oh, I didn't know. So then finally, the next month, you turned around and basically all you did was send paperwork, but the whole objective to the whole situation was actually having the paperwork signed so every resident that was on Berry Farms' property could have signed it, as of yet it hasn't came. Both times Chair Albert said that you would give me a call, which both times you have not. It's nice to hear on here that you went in and you spoke with this person, that person, and the other, but I have still been waiting. Outside of that, I've had problems with landscaping since 2019, and here we get ready to go into winter, so I guess I won't get to start, no way. But every time I remind them. At the present time, I've had a cord that been hanging from my house for almost two months now, get ready to go on three. They told me to call the cable people. I wouldn't even know what cable person to call, because I didn't have it wired for cable here. So I have a fire stick, so I don't know, but it's their property, so they should call. First, it might have been Pepco or the electric company, and like I told them before that, I don't even have a Pepco bill or none of that, and when you call in, you have to get an account number for that. So I ask them each and every day, can they get a ladder from somewhere and get up there and cut it themselves, or call whoever they need to call? So that just goes on and on and on. If you're not aware of it, I also had a fence issue, and I had two work orders to be placed on it, and still, they haven't came back to do work. The nightmare part of this, that I've heard from day one, when the work was stopped, was, okay, Ms. Matthews, they might have to tear this fence down and bring it back up. My question is, if that be the nightmare, will they have to permit to put it in place? From my understanding, 'cause I would have thought, because three times I was turned down, denied, and fourth, I got it. But then there came a part where, I guess, DC Housing Authority, because it's their land property, I don't know, they have done things where as though they didn't get with the DC Regulatory Affairs. The young lady next door feels as though, where they placed the fences on her fanny line, her kids can't come out in the play, but the kids ain't never came out to play since I've been here, but they run up and down the steps and knock my pictures off the wall and break them. So I got an issue with that, and the fact that this was done due to a disability and the paperwork and stuff was in there. So I'm mentally and physically, I'm stressed by the procedure. And then you got all these different departments, like they came, the contractors, and they painted. I was telling them that I was having condensation, and I'm talking fast too, because I'm trying to get it all in before you say time up, but the condensation was coming out of my bathroom. But the condensation was coming out the vent in my bathroom. I kept telling them, and I kept telling them, and it wasn't until it actually got a hole that they came and fixed it. But the catch twenty-two is that because it was contracted to paint, you would think that they know this stuff can happen and you might have to paint. Now, they had to figure out where, where the paint came from, where, what's going on with the paint. I guess now Mr. Moody is involved. I don't know. Um, I had issues with my floors. Hopefully and prayfully, that they're coming Friday after one o'clock. But it's just too many things that's going on, and it takes such a long time, not only for our landlord, but also DC Housing Authority, who are our landlords, to be able to do stuff. Y'all wait until the situation gets unbearable or till it get worse than what it is, and then you either try to banage it or whatever. I have one other thing that I could probably say before my time run out, and if I got more time, I'll put some more stuff in. But there have been meetings that are being held. And, and, and what I'm getting sick and tired of hearing is that the DC, not DC, but Empower DC and BFTA keep getting thrown up under the bus. We're not the bad guys here, guys. Anybody that's listening, all we're trying to do is make things better for the residents that came behind us, that's gonna see this redevelopment because the domino effect is real. As we can see, they coming through every property to do what they do. We was just trying to make sure bedroom sizes was larger, land, different things like that. We want Berry Farms to be historical. Please understand, I don't care what meeting y'all go to. We are not the reason why it's not up yet. We are not the reason why they gonna put the senior builder up, and it might take five to six years to do whatever else, or a year, whatever. It's because they allowed to do this stuff with monopoly money, not have permits or whatever. And if you check the history, it takes ten or twenty years for them to seem to put stuff up. And a lot of people be dead before that time, and they have to live in the environment in which they live in. But it all needs to be fixed. And Ms. Donaldson, when are you gonna call or do whatever you're supposed to do?
Matthews, I let, I let you go over a whole minute. Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Okay, fine and lovely, and I'm surprised that you are in.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, I think I've lost. I don't wanna hear you. Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. I apologize. My, uh...
Can I, can I hang up, or do I have to stay on the phone? My name is Stephanie Johnson Law.
Well, you can, you can, you can exit the phone if you would like. If you would like to stay for the meeting, you're more than welcome to continue. Um, but your time is up for your, um, testimony. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go back and try Peggy Ditch, Ditch Row again. Ms. Ditch Row, are you on the line?
No response, huh?
Okay. So, uh, I didn't hear you, Ms. Matthews. I apologize. I was trying to get some clarity. I didn't hear what she said. But you have a direct contact for me. Anything you would like to discuss with me directly, you're more than welcome to do so, like you have over the fifteen years we've known each other.
I don't, you're not, my phone was messed up, so I don't have that information, so I'm a little lost right now.
I'll get, I'll make sure you get it. I'll make sure you get it. Um, Heather Day? Heather Day? Heather Day? Okay. Mary Roselle Woody. Mary Roselle Woody? Mary Roselle Woody? Patricia Bishop, are you here? Ms. Bishop? Karen? Is that the, the Dregan?
Bishop is here.
Oh, Ms. Bishop is here?
Yes, Bishop is here.
Okay, Ms. Bishop. Okay, Ms. Bishop, you can proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to remind the board of the complaints I placed in months ago. The ventilations being cleaned and these recycling trash cans being removed from this property. I know things take the time to take care of that also. Ms. Reeves, I would appreciate meeting with you and you only in person at the location of two oh three En Street, apartment five ten, one day, soon.
And this is, you're saying to me? Are you asking me?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop, okay. And you wanna tell me where that location is again, and we can reach out to you? Alitha, do we have a contact from Ms. Bishop?
Two oh three En Street Southwest.
Okay, all right. I was just down there. Last week, we just collapsed, but I, I'll definitely come back.
I did not attend. I had my own party for Halloween for my residents. The reason I did not attend was because of developers.
No problem. I'll, I'll make sure. If you just wanna meet with me directly, I'll make sure that, um, I work with the team that supports me at DC Housing Authority, and we'll get you on my schedule, and I'll come out at the ti, at your time, at your availability. I'll be there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Once again, I'd like to address the entire board. Because of these situations that's been going on with these developers, people being displaced, moved, and even with the green leaf developers, the process that they're doing is not the correct process that we asked for in the beginning. So, that entire, because of Tyrone Gare, and how that went on and how it's still going on, that entire redevelopment process need to be stopped and come back to the tenants. I am newly elected president, and all I want to do is to make sure that all green leaf residents have the right to return with the bedroom sizes, with the young adults having their own place. Stop giving developers the opportunity to have their own private property, to do what they want to do, instead of riding by what HUD has always asked to provide for the low income, a roof over their head or according to their income. Years and years of other properties not even being returned because they have not built for them. Please, board, realize that this is not and should not happen to two oh three or any green leaf property, twelve hundred, the mid-rise, the apartments or the housing. It's time to stop. Join me and get in this type of good trouble to see that our people have everything that they was entitled to from day one by the city government federal. And I appreciate y'all for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop, and I look forward to visiting you very soon.
Thank you.
No problem. Karen? Ladregan? Karen Ladregan, are you here? Thank you. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Uh, Lundregan.
Lundregan. Okay, thank you. My apologies.
That's okay. Hi. Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Ms. Reader, Ms. Donald and Commissioners. Um, I'm here to speak again today about more unresolved issues and no follow-up as well. Uh, honestly, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, you guys, I'm incredibly frustrated right now, too. I've had matters. I've been reaching out for months, and I have not gotten follow-up calls. I've been assured of certain people calling me back that they don't call. And I apologize. That's not okay with me. It's just not. Um, you know, I've been bringing up matters about the utility assistance cards, submissions with that. I reached out to Ayesha Thompson, Carol Punter. I don't think Carol Punter handled it appropriately. I know she's no longer here, but, um, I, I need, I need follow-up and I need resolution, and I need people calling me back. Um, I have other ongoing matters, you know, too, with the, you know, I'm getting, I feel like I'm getting different messages from some people I talked with at the Housing Authority and other people there give me, uh, inaccurate information. I, I'm not really sure what to do anymore. I, I'd really love to get a follow-up call to address my outstanding matters as well. And I, I'm just wondering if there's a process for follow-up? You know, I, I just hear a lot of people talking about not getting follow-up calls and everything. I, I'd like to know how maybe this, you know, can be addressed so that people can get, uh, follow-up calls. And I respect that everybody's busy. I understand that, but, um, I, I need a way to have some, some resolution.
If I can. Did you, do you recall receiving a call from a Ms. Joseph?
Yeah, she, she called me. She was supposed to check into some matters and get back to me, and she didn't, uh, today. So, um, I, I don't know. Ms. Reader, you, you'd be willing to call me directly? I had, and I, I knew the last time that I testified last month, somebody said that Ms. Donald would follow up with me, Brenda Donald, and I, I didn't, I didn't hear.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Please respond, uh, Executive Director. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Donald. I, I just would, um, recommend that the board look at the follow-up, um, summary that is in your packet for a timeline and a list of very specific dates of follow-up, who spoke with, um, Ms. Lundregan, when and what the resolutions were. So, it's not accurate to say that no one has followed up and that there, um, you might not again like the answers, but there are at least half a dozen, um, various, I'm sorry, there are five very specific, um, references to follow up who did it and what, um, the, um, information that was provided, so...
Uh, Ms. Donald, I, I have all of those, and I, I apologize, but you're, you're, it's inaccurate what you're telling me. Um, it's not that I'm not, not happy with the resolution. It's not that, that's not what's going on here. Uh, it, so, um, I've had several, I've had several emails that I've sent. I got a letter from Carol Punter that I was not satisfied with, and I reached out and testified to the board. I spoke to Rachel Joseph briefly, who was gonna check into things and get back to me. That hasn't happened. So, it's not that I'm not happy. Your statements are inaccurate, and, and no disrespect meant. But this, these issues have not been resolved, and I, I, you know, they're, they're just not being resolved. You know, I mean, I, I've been told, I know Ms. Punter sent me a letter and, you know, addressing generic things. This matter remains very much unresolved. I've had issues going back to July with, with the utility assistance card that I was promised bank managers would call me that never called me. So, I, I have email communications here myself. The problem is, these matters remain unresolved.
So, Karen, if you don't mind, if I can follow up with the, um, Executive Director and her team, and I will personally make sure that I respond to you in writing by closing, well, tomorrow's a holiday, but by the end of the day tomorrow.
Is there a way, Ms. Reeves? I'm sorry. I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to give you some resolution. That's all.
Is there a way that I can have a phone call with you to maybe more specifically address, like my position? And I don't mean any disrespect to Ms. Donald or anybody, but it, it's just not accurate.
You can have a phone call with me. Um, in the chat, Alitha is gonna put my cell phone number in there.
Okay.
Look, she's gonna give you, she's gonna give you my cell phone number directly to you, and you can call me immediately after this meeting.
I, I really appreciate that.
No problem. If you don't mind, I am going to take the liberty and include the staff just so that we can get some resolution to your issues, so that we're all speaking one language.
I appreciate it. And, and Ms. Donald, I mean, no disrespect to you. I, I just didn't agree with your statement.
None taken. I think we're, we're professional enough to receive that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Happy holidays.
All right. And we'll be talking to you shortly. Um, Patricia Ann Malloy. This is Malloy. How are you?
Good afternoon, all. Um, uh, Director Donald, I would like to thank you for getting the phones up and running in Lincoln Heights. Thank you for that. Also, before I get started, I'm very disheartening, I hope I'm hearing this right, that we have no representation of residents on the Board of Commissioners. I feel we, as residents, have no input on this board at this time, and it's very disheartening. My name is Patricia Malloy, Lincoln Heights Resident Council President. I am here to speak on relocation process to the off-site of Lincoln Heights for new community. Mid-June, the process started for doing paperwork at DCHA and the off-staff property. During that interview with DCHA to determine eligibility or ineligible, residents were told they were eligible by DCHA's E-Card team. So, appointments was made by off-site management companies to proceed with their process of applications. Residents was able to pick out their units and got their apartment numbers. The first week of October, nineteen residents received letters from DCHA saying that they were ineligible because they were over income, after being told with their first interview that they were not. No one from DCHA would answer their phones to give clarification to residents. I called Mrs. Springs, a manager, to please email Sherri Smith to give me a call, which I have not received yet. On October the twenty-eighth, we had a webcast with Brittany Holloway, the relocation specialist, and the E-Card team. We have a PowerPoint that was presented to us, and then the Commissioner, I also have it in writing. They, the, uh, the reason, the only reason they gave us was there was a human error made as to what income limit was to be used to this specific project. If we, the residents, had made that error, we would have been given a thirty-day notice. Is it all right to staff to make an error on people's livelihoods? To me, it's a slap in the face. We had seventy-seven residents who applied for the Providence Place and the Strand. Out of the nineteen is over income. Then they gonna tell us only nine people are eligible. I bought, I thought I bought a commission or put some type of criteria in place for onsite for new community. Now I see that I have no faith in this entire process. First of all, we were not told that these were sectioned voucher units. We've had three off-site developments. We've never went through what we are going through now. We have residents who are depressed, and we also, you talk about self-sufficiency. Now, the family members, it's not the head of the household so much who's over income. It's their family members. We have a human capital component. They did everything they could do. They got the resident's job. This is a slap in the face, and I blame DCHA for it. I have not gotten a response from Director Donald or anyone as to how this could have happened. Uh, Cheryl, Sheila Miller with Dimpad, a veteran that said she had a conversation with Director Donald, and, uh, Director Donald's supposed to get back with her. Director Donald and the Commissioners, we are your clients. We live in public housing. We live on your development. Is this the way you're gonna continue to treat us? If so, you only react when there is a lawsuit placed against the agency. I don't wanna do that. Give us the same respect that you want us to give you.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, please.
Yes, um, Ms. Malloy, um, this was just brought to my attention, um, within the last, um, week or so, and I am wait, uh, we're, when I just had a brief conversation, I haven't had it with my entire staff, who I need to understand this issue. When I talked to Ms. Miller, we talked about ways to, um, to see if this could be resolved. But this is the first that I've heard of it, and, um, this is why, and you and I have not spoke, spoken about this at all. We are looking into it and to see what remedies there are, um, in terms of the over-income issue and who all that will affect, and again, if we could come up with some other solutions. But I, I just found out about this.
So, you're saying that your staff do not, whoever's, I'm not pointing a finger at anyone. There should be a communication in every department of DCHA. There should be a communication, before you come out and meet with us as residents, the Director of the Housing Authority should know what you're gonna speak about and what you put in writing. When you put something in writing to me, I consider that my bible. We have been let down so much. We have had resident, I had two of my seniors who called me that, that they're over income. One resident almost had a heart attack. It's not fair the way we are being treated. I feel Lincoln Heights, um, new community initiative have been more than fair with DCHA. Not one time have you seen us in the media bashing you all. Not one time. So, maybe that's what we need to do in order to be treated equally.
Malloy, I, I totally agree with you, and, um, this is going to the top of my list.
Thank you.
So, Executive Director, is it possible for us to at least, uh, let Ms. Malloy know when you're gonna reach out to her?
Well, she has framed the issue. It's been flagged. I have to do the... She has framed the issue, it's been flagged, I have to do the, do the research, but I will um we'll follow up with Ms. Malloy by next week, but I, I think this may be a long, complicated.
No, I hear you. I just think that at least a follow-up, Ms. Malloy.
Agreed.
I agree, thank you so much. Ms. Malloy, you would definitely be in contact with um Executive Director Donald. Thank you for bringing us to our attention. Lamont Baxter? Lamont Baxter? If you are muted and you're on the telephone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Okay? Wanda Davis, are you with us? Mrs. Davis? Mrs. Davis? Mrs. Davis? Olenia Alifon? Ms. Olenia, are you with us? Again, I wanna remind you, if you're on your telephone, you have to hit star six to unmute yourself. Karen, no more from the um resident witnesses that have actually asked to testify. We're gonna move to the non-residents. That Leah Odom? Mrs. Odom? Mrs. Odom? Isabella Jannott? Ms. Isabel, are you with us? Okay? Tori Collins? Tori Collins?
I'm Tori Collins, I'm present.
Thank you. Please proceed, Ms. Collins, that you testified.
Great, um I'm Tori Collins, I'm a resident of Ward Six. I live in Capitol Riverfront, Navy Yard. I am um an activist, activist and advocate um associated with Empower DC. My neighbor was Deborah Frazier, who was a longstanding community leader and um activist and advocate for housing and health um throughout DC. She has recently passed and she has, her passing means that the torch has been passed to me. I relocated to um DC for work and I moved to the neighborhood um where my employer was located. Upon um meeting Ms. Deborah Frazier, I found out about the redevelopment and what has, what has happened and taken place with Arthur um Cappers Carroll'sburg. So my question today is centered around and focused on um what's happening with the development and the replacement public housing units for Ca- uh Cappers Carroll'sburg. I know in two thousand and eighteen the authority applied for um and later in two thousand and nineteen received a five-year time extension request for the various lots on the Cappers footprints. That's uh Square seven thirty-nine, seven sixty-seven, seven sixty-eight, eight eighty-two. Um that's the planned unit development. And I live directly across from, on New Jersey Avenue on, from Square seven sixty-seven or seven sixty-eight, I believe. Um so I wanted to get an understanding. Um the first question being, what is happening with the development um and the replacement and why the, the application was put forth um for an extension? And what does this mean for the remaining public housing units? Um I did receive back in March of this year, I believe, thanks to Ms. Deborah, um the master plan for the Arthur Capper Carroll'sburg um redevelopment. This was from March two thousand and twenty-one. Um and so after reading through that and submitting questions and notes, um I think during that public hearing period, I'm still somewhat confused as to where we're going. I know that in five years from two thousand and nineteen is two thousand and twenty-three, so I wanted to find out um what, if anything, is planned for the delivery of those replacement units? And also the, another question is, are, are the people that were displaced from Arthur um Cappers, have, are they being tracked? Does DC Housing know where these, the families, at least the families, it's been over twenty years, I believe, or just about twenty years, where are the families of those people who are displaced, who would be eligible to uh move back into those units if they're ever built? Um so that's my reason for joining today. This is my first time joining. Um I appreciate all of the work that the Commission is doing, but we need some answers over here in the um, in this area to find out when we're, when the, when we're gonna get affordable housing. Um we know that the mayor has put forth, you know, um resolutions and information about adding more affordable housing specifically to um this area and I'm just wanting to hear from the Commission to see, you know, where we are, if this master plan, if this was something that was more so symbolic or was it substantive? Um so my question and my reason for being here today, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Ms. Collins. I'm gonna yield to um the Executive Director and her team for a response to uh Mrs. Collins' issue. Can you all hear me? I don't think you are unmuted.
Okay, sorry. Um yes, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for an update on um Capper today that is planned um for a briefing to the board coming up um sometime soon, but I'm not, I wasn't prepared for, I'm not prepared for an update today.
Could, could you give us the balance of units that need to be delivered?
I have that information. There are, I believe, two hundred thirty-six units according to, as, as referenced in the um master plan from March two thousand of this year. I think it's two thirty-six remaining units.
And what was the total number that needed to be replaced?
Seven hundred and seven.
So about thirty percent of the units fifteen years later haven't been?
That is correct.
And you, you're not prepared today to give any timeline as to when they may be delivered?
No, I'm not. I'm not prepared today.
Uh it's my understanding that those lots were put back out to market. What is the status of that?
And I'm sorry, I do not have an update on Capper today, I wasn't prepared. I don't have my team here. I didn't know that I was gonna be asked for this level of detail. I just had my first briefing recently and we will come back and update the board and the public.
So there's nobody from OCP on the phone?
No.
Why is? That seems uh odd.
So no one is on, the, the team is here, as soon as you see, um Commissioner Slover.
Then there's nobody else from DCHA other than?
We invite staff to the board meetings um depending on the issues that are being discussed um on the agenda and to um, that's how we're managing staff's time.
Okay, so we have no idea what, what the status of those two properties that were put back out to market. We have no status of that at all.
I, I don't think that's what was stated, Commissioner Slover. I think she said she's not prepared to give you an update at the moment, but I believe to Mrs. Collins' point, we can actually have an update to her within a timely fashion. Ms. Collins, we can give you an update. We're not prepared to provide you that information on this call, but we will definitely make sure that we're prepared and plan to answer the questions that you raise by next week.
Okay, I'll send in my statement as well so that we can have the, that um information written and on record. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mrs. Collins. Daniel, Daniel, would you do me a favor and pronounce your last name for me so next time I can pronounce it correctly?
Uh thank you, it's Del Piolago?
Piolago, okay, please proceed, Daniel.
Thank you um also much. Um I actually, I, I had a question about, you know, the composition of the board and um I know there's been quite a bit happening. Um Ms. Reader, you are the, the new chair and I think we heard a little earlier that Commissioner Talafaro has been suspended and then, actually, a lot of these questions were answered through, through the process. And, and then Director Donald said that in appointee, the, the voucher uh person um is working its way through the process or they are working through the process, but I wonder if there is any sort of public statement um that can be made about the board. I know and, and this is, I'm just asking the question. This is not, um I noticed that Commissioner Van Gasterie has not been um at the, wasn't at the meeting last month or, or is present at this meeting. So just wanting to check in um about what is happening with the board, um where we are, who, who's on, who's off, um and, and what are we to expect? With that, given all of the stuff that's in, in the news right now, um I, I, I think it'd be great if there could be any clarification. I understand there may be personnel issues um associated with this, but I wanted to place that question up there. And then I do have um i- if um a follow-up, I, it, my, my ears really perked up when the rent collection discussion was having a little earlier um because I think that has a lot to do with the many folks that will be affected by redevelopments that are in the pipeline. So many folks um I would say have been allowed to accrue arrearsages that are, you know, in the thousands of dollars, if not tens. Um so, you know, it, a worst-case scenario, and I'm not necessarily saying this will happen, but people that have, you know, no action has been taken on them. They get relocated, they are now, you know, added, at a, a non-lease compliant. So what does that mean for their ability to return to property, to redevelop properties? What is planned to ensure that um because um these folks um are in this current situation and nothing has been done to address it, you know, I, I would hope that folks aren't filtered out from being able to return to properties um if and, if and when um, you know, that happens. So I, I hope that's clear. Um, you know, th- there is a big concern that um that is an, it, it, an immediate um lease infraction for many, many public housing residents and no action has been taken to date and that's not a bad thing necessarily. However, um it does pose quite a, a, an issue for these redevelopments and people's right of return. So I, I wanted to um post those two things.
So I'll answer the first question about the board, Daniel, and then I'll yield to um the staff to answer the follow-up questions that you mentioned. So currently, what we have as a complement of the board, you have three resident appointees, which you know, the labor advocacy and um, and you have three resident appointees and you have two from the labor and advocacy. You have six mayor appointees. Most recently, the council, the city council decided to add two more. They're selecting one and the, and the mayor gets to select one. So that's a compliment. At the moment, we're down, um as you heard through the earlier part of the conversation, as a result of our three resident councils not being uh re-elected, we're gonna, we're hoping that we can have a resolution that will give them the ability to continue to act on the board until the elections occur in March. That's what you talked about, we discussed. Could you please reach your line? Please, thank you. Nope, all right, thank you. So moving forward, the positions that are, we're looking at now, there is a housing choice voucher individual that's being vetted to join the board as well. Um the mayor's gonna select another appointee along with the city council. And then at that moment, once we decide whether or not we're gonna have those three resident council members to be able to pass this resolution, you bet you heard the discussion around that, then hopefully they'll be able to come back on the board and then they'll have a new election in as early as March of next year. So that's the complement of the board and we're continuing to do business as usual. Um most of which you know, we're continuing to move forward, support the staff with um ensuring that the residents have their needs met and that they're living with a insured, best quality of life, the best of our ability. So that's where we are. No action has stopped, no momentum has stopped. We're continuing to work and move forward in the best interest of the residents. Any, um and I'll yield to uh Director Donald and her team to respond to the follow-up questions that Daniel posed.
Just for clarity, there's only six current members of the board?
There are currently six members of the board, you're right. Thank you, Commissioner Slover, for that. Director Donald?
Yes, um I'm not sure I was following. I know, Daniel, you were making some statements and I wasn't sure um what additional questions you had.
I just wanted to flag that many folks have accrued outrageous arrearsages and no action has been taken currently, which it, it's, it's a weird space for me because obviously I wouldn't want anyone evicted, but nonetheless, the reality is a reality. If these folks will be affected by redevelopments, what does that mean for their ability to return because they are currently lease non-compliant? And since many, many residents will be affected by planned redevelopments, I'm just wondering how that all works together and I, I would hate it to be a way to filter residents out from returning to redeveloped properties.
Okay, thank you. Of course, that is absolutely not the intention and we would have to look on a case-by-case basis to find out who is not rent compliant and to see if there are opportunities to cure that in a timely way. As you know, um you can become rent compliant with a repayment plan um that can be tailored to meet um an individual's circumstances. So um it's not the intent to block anyone. We are committed to right to return and as you know, all of these developments have taken a long time in, in terms of um relocation, but that's on a case-by-case basis. I don't think that we, don't have a, a sense of how many people or where the people are whose rent is behind and whether they're, you know, teed up for relocation or if they have been relocated. As I said earlier, we're doing the analysis on everyone who has outstanding rent so that I can get a handle on all the various um scenarios and the implications going forward.
Thank you, Director Donald.
So I would like to offer one thing uh historical to that as well. Um we went through this issue when we started the Berry Farm project and um what the board did at that point concluded to do was to take everybody who had a rent arrearsage and to put them on a payment plan to ensure that they were not subject to not being eligible to come back to the property as a result of the rent arrearsage. So that is a tool we used before.
Thanks, Commissioner, I thought I just-
Thank you. So we're gonna go to our next, uh Florence McCormick. Florence McCormick, are you with us?
Hi, Florence McCormick speaking.
Please go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, this is Florence McCormick.
Ma'am, you can proceed with your testimony.
I am, I wanted to speak to um the panel because I am um recovering from neighborhood gang um shooting and I was injured. And my name came up on the um voucher list. I waited for like twenty-five years. And my income is still um less than what the rent is in the Washington DC area. And I was um, I guess you'd call it mishandled. I was homeless when I came down um for my voucher interview and um the client placement specialist did not give it to me. So um I've been out shopping for um apartments and I found several and because of my income, um all the project managers are telling me that I need my mainstream voucher or I need um P, a project-based voucher, which I live in project-based property right now. And I'm under doctor's care from the um gang shooting and, you know, I just, I just wanna move and I just um, and the only reason, like I said, that I am pleading and calling for help is because of my income level and I am a senior. And I just, I just need some help and I'm just asking for somebody to help me because with God, all things are possible. And when I call housing, they were like, oh no, you gotta say where you at and, you know, we don't give out vouchers if this and that and the other. And I wanna know, is that a rule? And I want to know, is that a rule or is it the law? What does the law say versus, what rules do the people make up? I want to know if the law says that if I live in public housing and I almost lose my life as a result of gang violence in my neighborhood, do I have to stay there because at this present time, I'm not able to afford a house that's higher than what my income? So would you all rather let the person just get sick or something worse happen in the neighborhood and listen to what they are saying? Or just, you know, I just want to know, is it true what you all are telling me, what the people that work for housing is telling me? That once you end up housing, home, and if you get hurt there or injured there, you got to stay there no matter what? I don't believe that is the law. And, you know, I just want some clarity so I can take, you know, some other steps.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. And I sincerely apologize for what occurred with you. I'm going to ask Executive Donald, do we want to speak with Ms. McCormick? You want to speak with her offline in terms of her process?
Yes, we have spoken with her and we will continue the conversations if she wishes, if we weren't clear about what she's eligible for.
Okay. So things that we need to find are her eligibility and then, if possible?
We're, we're.
Okay, all right. So no problem. So Ms. McCormick, I'm asking that the team reach out to you again so we can get a better clarity and identify the best situation for you. And that should be done by the end of this week. So at least have a follow-up phone call with next staff.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, bye.
Have you all forgot about me? I haven't spoken.
And who is that? I'm sorry. I wasn't, I was coming to you. You're down on the list. I see you. I haven't gotten to you yet. Natasha Clough? Natasha Clough with us today. Natasha Clough. Mr. Jordan, it seems like you're testifying again. Mr. William Jordan. Ms. Dowdy, you're our last person that we have on our list to testify. You may move forward, ma'am, with your testimony. Papina Dowdy? Papina Dowdy? If you need to unmute yourself, it's star six.
I've been on the waiting list over 38 years and still haven't received not a voucher, not anything. I've updated everything, 2005, 2009, 2011, 2015, 2018, and I still haven't gotten any help. When I call there to housing, they'll put you on hold, then the phone will click off. So I need to know what are the steps that I need to take?
Ms. Addy, we will be happy to follow up with you and see if we can match you up with one of our vacant units.
Okay, can you tell me when that will be? Because I have some physical issues, but yes.
Yep, we will call you no later than Monday.
Okay, thank you so much. And you all have a good day. I appreciate you all listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Addy. We're going to, Ms. Bishop, I'm going to give you one minute, one minute only, Ms. Bishop.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I would just wanted to bring back to the attention that I had also asked for the tenants that are living in the worst conditions in the apartment building to be moved to the apartments that has been fixed up so that their places can be fixed up and moved back into their original places? Is it possible that that could happen? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. We're going to follow up with you. I think that's a, more than a yes or no answer, so we will have to follow back up with you with that one. But I hear your concern. At this time, do we have any final comments from our board members? Hearing none. I want to make an announcement. The next board commissioners and annual meeting will be held Wednesday, December the 8th at 1:00 PM via WebEx. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting will be live and can be found at www.dchouses.org. At this time, we will adjourn this meeting. Call this meeting to adjourn at 3:31 PM. Thank you all. Have a good day. And Ms. Taryn, I believe we're going to be giving you a call shortly. Thank you all. Have a good weekend. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you. Nobody talks about them being in court.